I'd like to call this meeting and the Board of Supervisors, no order please. And the first item on the agenda is our invocation. If people will please stand and reflect on the things going before us tonight. And following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Craig Meadows.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is a presentation of recognition for retired employees with 25 years or more in service. Invite the board if they'll please come down and join me. And as the participants are called, if you'll please come up to the podium. Now, I've got to ask folks to come forward and as they do, it's okay to stay, so we can hear the group photo. And appreciate that. And Mr. Brown, you want to welcome that guy down? And the first certificate is for Sharon Earl Brown, for 25 years of service. Next is Dennis O'Waits, for 30 years of service.
It was just a rich hour when I started.
And now I'll ask the family of Margaret D. Johnson from home, who's at the 30 years of service. And I have two more certificates, and that's really his. Pepper G. Huff. And Alice Jones. Later on, I'm going to have a signal, so we'll get those another time. And we do need folks to kind of reel here. That's always a good way to start a meeting, and have something. A lot of years of experience, this meeting in our county. The next item on the agenda is a public address. We have nobody signed up for public address, but if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, please step forward, say your name and address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close our public address. The next item is an addendum, and we don't have one.
No, sir, not tonight.
All right, the next item is consent agenda. Do you have a motion, please?
Seven.
And moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Gager.
Aye.
Mr. Curry.
Aye.
Chair of the ladies.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the first item on our work session is on tax relief for the elderly and disabled. And Ms. Edmonds?
Yes, sir. I do have some things to pass out. Okay, where we left off before is we had a general discussion about the program, whether or not we wanted to consider changes again. And we left with meeting with the towns, looking at some additional data, and then coming back with some recommended changes, or no changes, or a combination. So, we're here tonight to sort of follow up on our discussion that occurred with our committee, which included representatives from both of the towns, our county attorney, our commissioner of revenue, our finance director, and myself. The first thing we want to make sure that everyone understands, and I'm sure our attorney will chime in if I leave out any important pieces of the changes, but state law did change. And in that change, it allows localities a lot more flexibility in defining specifics of our program. Income and asset limits are no longer set by the state and can be set locally. The locality can now exclude all or a portion of certain sources of income or assets in determining the limits for annual income and net worth. Localities may also extend tax relief to include dwellings that are jointly owned by individuals, all of whom are not 65 or totally disabled. So those are some fairly major changes to what the requirements were that we had to follow when state law prescribed all the particulars about how the program had to be designed in the caps and place. We did, as I said, meet with the towns. The towns have a tax relief program. They have always generally tried to follow whatever the county did so that there would be less confusion among citizens about having multiple or different programs. We also met and reviewed some data, and we'll look at some of that as we go through the presentation, in an effort to determine if we could assess potential trends or costs associated with changes in the future. The first one here is just sort of a breakdown, looking at how much does tax relief cost by the general areas? As you can see, the majority of the costs are for residents in the unincorporated areas. The town of Christiansburg is next, and relatively small portion of the participants are in Blacksburg.
Excuse me, Carol. Should we ask questions now, or would you prefer if we held?
Whatever. If you'd like to now, that's fine.
Well, I was curious about this cost. Is there any sense about why this has been, the trends have been increasing? Is it simply because of appreciation, that we've lost more revenue because property values have been higher and the tax rate has increased, or because more people are taking advantage of the?
Well, that one, we will see a little more data as we go on.
Okay.
I think we got to the end, and this is sort of the way the process went. We gathered data, the commissioner's office supplied us with a lot of data, we started looking at all of it, and then went, okay, what does that tell us about, why have these costs increased? It's basically, and at one point, some of it has increased due to the veterans participants because state law changed, 100% relief, and there's no income limits or eligibility limits at all. 100% disabled veterans, they get 100% of relief. So, that's about $108,000 of this total. It still is about a 57% increase in costs over, from 2010 to 2012, when you subtract out the veterans issue. So, and I think you'll see as we go through this, is that some of it is related to the taxes being higher, the tax rate increase. Some of it is related to the number of participants increasing. Now, which portions are related to the increase in the income versus the increase in the assets? I'll give you the punchline before we get to the end. We're not sure. We're really not sure exactly how much increase was associated with which item, which is what led us to the recommendation you'll see at the end. Again, tax relief participants or recipients, and we excluded mobile homes from this for no reason other than it was just, we didn't want to repeat and have a multitude of slides. It follows the same proportions. Again, the largest number of participants are in the unincorporated areas of county, followed by Christiansburg. The majority of participants or recipients receive the 100% relief. When you start to break down the data and then look at income levels, we started looking at high and low in each one of your percentage of relief. The lowest income in those receiving 100% relief was zero, and the highest income was 31,909. But when you look at the average, your average is hovering about $16,800. So you have some ends that are fairly dramatic, but the average runs around $16,800. And you can see the same as it follows down through the other percentages. The 60% on the low end is $32,000 in income. The highest is up to the $49,000, the cap being at $50,000. And your average, however, is around 35. Then the 40%, the lowest is 40,000, the highest is 49, which is the cap, and your average is higher at 44,000. Now, I can tell you, when we go back to recipients, that over a three-year period, if you remember, costs outside of veterans increased 57%. The number of participants in the three-year period excluding the veterans is about a 31% increase. So you have some of the costs attributable to more people, some of the costs attributable to the increase in taxes, there's more taxes getting relief, and then a portion of it attributable to probably people moving from the 60% range to the 100% relief range. Again, net worth, the low is zero, the high runs anywhere from 132 to 149, 178, and your cap is 150. Your averages, however, again, hover closer to the bottom of the ranges, 28,000 at 100%, 52,000 at 60%, 58,000 at 40%. Part of what we looked at...
Sorry, Carol, just on the previous slide for a second. Are those, are these estimates, these averages, are they weighted?
No.
They're not? So it's just the high and the low?
Just the high and the low.
Okay, so, but if we had more people at the high end, then that obviously would actually skew the average.
Yeah, if you had, if the largest majority of your people were toward the highest end in net worth, here at 100%, your averages would go up. So you really do have more outliers at the top end, you know, not as many in terms of numbers, and more hovering around the bottom end on these categories.
Could I ask something? Do these folks, when they come in and apply for relief, and are they required to bring any documentation as to what kind of wealth they have, or what kind they don't have? And if so, what is it that they have to bring in?
Okay. Our commissioner, Helen Royal, is here, and I'm going to have to defer to her for that. I don't know what they bring in.
For proof of income, they have to have W-2s, 1099s, a federal income tax form, anything that proves their income. Okay? For net worth, it's 1099s that state how much they have in 401Ks, IRAs, the clean retail price of their vehicles from NADA, cash value of insurance policies, and we require a piece of paper to back everything they put down.
Home value and everything.
The other thing we wanted to look at as a whole review of the data available was, what are the home values? And we included the home value plus an acre of land because that's what's exempt currently, is the home value, one acre of land, to try and determine, well, where, if you looked at all of these together, where do they gather in terms of the majority of the home values of the eligible recipient? And again, this does not include veterans, but if you see where the red line is, that's the peak, and that's a little over $100,000. Again, you have some out toward the end, approaching greater than $270,000, and I think there are three or four past that amount, but the majority gathers somewhere here between $80,000 and $150,000 in terms of the home and one acre of land that's excluded or exempt. If it's not exempt and there's more land, then that gets counted into your financial worth. The proposed change, well, we talked about a lot of this data. We talked about, well, can we actually determine what's causing the increase? We talked about a lot of things in trying to review this data, and generally, one thing led us to want more data. I think it's the kind of thing you could analyze and analyze and analyze. But when we got to the end, there's one thing that we kept in mind, and that's that people who receive social security are going to get a 1.7% increase. And we didn't want anyone to lose their eligibility who is currently eligible because of that small COLA amount. So, the following table with the proposed income change actually rolls up the maximum $1,000. I think if you do, $50,000 times the 1.7%, it's like $850, and we just round it up. And then it's apportioned out among the other categories, and that was our recommendation for income, largely because we felt like we needed one year where there wasn't major change to set a benchmark to then become, start to look at what kind of change occurs when you don't have a multitude of factors, in order to be able to sort of trend out some estimates for the future, and that was our thinking behind that. We were asked to look at asset limits. I think the thought was not to change them this year, as I said, to sort of give a benchmark. But again, when we looked at where they fell in terms of the averages, it seemed like the range was low enough that it was accommodating the majority of people, rather than making an additional change. If the board agrees with this and wants to proceed in this direction, there's a resolution to schedule a public hearing on your agenda. If you do not want to do that, you want to table it, you certainly can, or if you want to amend it, you can do that as well. If you move ahead with the resolution tonight, the schedule would go, public hearing on your November 14th meeting, that would be a Wednesday, and when you're back from your conference and voting on the ordinance, the last meeting of this month.
Mr. Brown?
I know that you guys meet with the two towns, and was the two towns agreeable to this, to changes and things?
They gave the consensus that they were. Their last meeting, the town of Blacksburg was not there, but sent the information, and we sent the information to them. I've not heard anything back that they would not support it.
I have one question. I'm not sure that your workings here are what they should be. And that has to do with their income. You said you was going, because they got a 1.7% COLA, or 1.7% increase, you wanted to do this, but that's a 1.7% increase on mostly of them, somewhere between $800 and $1,200. To where I'm here, you're talking about $800 to $1,000. If you only wanted to give it on your percentage of income, didn't want that to kick them out, then it would need to be back on what they actually get in social security.
Well, I think our thought was, we would adjust the ranges so that they would accommodate that level of increase within the range, so people wouldn't fall out of their range. So we weren't doing the individual one, we were just increasing the ranges proportionally was our intent.
Well, even if they are getting $2,000, we're only talking about $340.
Husband and wife. If you look at husband and wife, if husband gets it and the wife gets it, and it could...
It's according to what they make, and most of them, though, are going to be in the...
It could be $600, $700.
$1,200. So, like I say, $2,000, it only gives them $340.
Well, here's what, the way we calculated it. We took the maximum, which was $50,000, multiplied that times 1.7, that's $850, and then rounded up. That's all we did.
Okay, then, so you're giving something other than, all I'm saying is that it's more than what the 1.7% is.
Yes, sir, it is. We decided to round up to the 151, just so we would have an even number of them. There's no magic.
Yeah, so it gives a little bit...
I don't have a problem with that.
You're absolutely right. It is more than 1.7%.
It's just the math didn't work.
You're all right.
I'm trying to get back to one thing. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I think the suggestion to not make radical changes this year and gather more data, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I look for, I mean, this, yeah, it just makes sense, and I look forward to reevaluating it when we can have more data in the future.
Certainly staff's recommendation as well.
That is, and that's what's included on your agenda, is schedule a public hearing for later.
All right, anybody else on the subject?
Want to thank Carol and the two towns for coming together. Usually, we have this discussion and then share it with the towns, but this year, we wanted to have the towns an integral part of this because we knew it was going to have some effect on them as well, and they also asked us ahead of time if we could make sure they were included in the discussion, so...
The next item is our reserve funds update.
I think Carol's going to handle that one, too.
That would be me again. Okay, you also have some information that we uploaded to your Dropbox in work session items, but I also have copies of that I'll pass out now.
I got one. Oh, no, he's already given me four today.
You want to make sure that he has one right.
Well, when Carol and I are working on stuff, we have to put dates and times at the top because we hand each other so much stuff during the day, you lose track of which one's the most recent one.
I'm going to actually talk from the paper. It's got a little more detail on it. The slides are just mainly to reference. And how I got started with this, after the discussion at the last meeting about reserves and what had happened, I actually had to sit down myself and start making the list. Okay, on this date, we talked about this, and then on this date, we did this, because we talk about a lot of numbers, we talk about a lot of estimates, and then we come back with information that trues that up in terms of actuals. So we have a lot of things we talk about at different points in time. So, this was helpful to me, just sort of straightening out, okay, when did we do what? And I thought maybe it'd be useful for everybody else as well. So, the first thing we started talking about was the, what we call in Craig Hates, windfall dollars.
One-time monies.
I can't get away from it, we've called it that so long, and I know what it is, so, and I think you know what it is, too. On March 1st was the first time in the presentation we started looking at if you had a 12-cent increase because of that collection payment in June that's not budgeted. It provides some one-time-only money, which we shall, from now on, call one-time money. That amount was $4,148.610 in terms of the estimate. We also made the recommendation of how that could be apportioned. We also made the recommendation of how that could be apportioned. One-time budget requests, and we'll look at those in a little more detail in a moment. Add more to the capital reserve, we have a capital reserve, this would be to add more to it. Facilities maintenance reserve, we do have one, this would be to add more to it. A new reserve, the fuel, based on what was happening with the crazy gas prices, and making sure that we had enough to address those increases in the future. Compensatory time reserve was based on the sheriff's office needing to buy down some comp time for the deputies. And the animal shelter at $1 million. Again, these were just recommendations. No action has occurred, other than that was our recommendation. The one-time budget request, just to review, because on July 9th, two resolutions were adopted, and they were in the amount, in the amounts of $398.610 for one-time-only items on the county side, and $750,000 for the school requests. On the county list, this is the same list that we had during the budget process, and we've just shown those again, that was what was included in the appropriation.
Do you want questions during, or will we wait till after?
Go ahead.
The, as far as the motor mile compliance, we're not planning on paving at this point in time, we're waiting to see if you...
No.
Okay.
In that resolution, what we did was appropriate it into the capital account.
Okay.
And once a project is defined, it will need to come back to you to do, to put it to a project account about what that is. We just held it there, not knowing at that point in time what was going to transpire in terms of the paving, but I can guarantee you, there are other places that it needs to go, but it will need to come back to you to identify the project account for it to go into. Okay. The March 1st presentation, also during that and the budget, we talked about current reserves. And so, the chart that is on the paper and on your screens right now, looks at what we had in current reserves, what our recommendation was to increase them, and what the total was going to be, based on our estimate of what the windfall amount would be. The debt service reserve there, we use that, that's earmarked to do what we call shaving the peak on the debt. That's how we lowered the amount from the full 10 cents to nine and a half, and were able to reallocate that other half to the schools, was taking existing funds and matching it up over the debt service payments in the future, in order to lower those peaks to an amount that would meet nine and a half cents. Now, here's where the things change, and this was the presentation our finance director gave on August the 13th, and this is where the true-up comes into play. Because it's at this point in time that you look at the number you have at the end, which she went over, the amount that we re-appropriated for purchase orders and carryovers, we did an estimate of $1 million for the county carryovers, we've not, you've not done that yet, we've not brought it to you for approval. We do have the requests in, it's just not been put together or analyzed in order to bring it to you at this point. If you'll recall, Angie also went over the amount needed for cash flow, she does a look back on that of the exact amount of cash needed, and that's what your third number of 21.2 million is. Then you have an estimate again of your current, or the amounts in current reserves, and there's some reserves here that we don't always talk about, one of which is the auto graveyard. Those are monies that are held in advance and set aside if you have to clean up the junkyards. The technology reserve, some years ago, the board adopted a policy that funds remaining at year-end in the information technology budget would roll into a technology reserve, so there would be monies there for things that don't happen evenly every operating year, such as replacements of machines, MDTs, or special project things, that there would be some money to work with. And so, that reserve goes up and down, depending upon what projects get approved, and how much money remains at the end of the year. The line-of-duty reserve, if you recall, instead of paying the VRS rates, the board decided to self-insure, and so, monies are placed in a line-of-duty reserve for those payments, as opposed to paying out for VRS pay in the future. And that brings us over to the column that has $4,131,592. That was the actual windfall collection, and it's slightly less than what we estimated at $41,486.10, about $18,000 less, but still pretty close. And from that, again, already appropriated have been the county monies for the one-time budget items, same for schools. There was also some additional funds for the jointer study that came out of the, or we identified as coming out of those dollars as well. That makes the capital reserve go down a little bit from the $1 million that we were recommending be added to it. Facilities, the same, fuel, the same, compensatory time, the same, and the animal shelter, the same. So, the thing that was new in what Angie presented is how much money was left over that hadn't been discussed, distributed, or talked about in any way. That was $5.6 million. And we included with that the June numbers from years prior, because as you'll see, it goes up and down. In 2009, you had about $4.5 million. By the time you got to 2010, and if you all remember, that was a really, really bad year, we had cuts, we had lots of things to address, well, you had to use more of that undistributed money. So, by the time we got to the end of 2010, it had gone down. 2011, it was back up to $4 million. Again, it wasn't used during the year, and that's a part of 5.6. Now, the additional, and part of that presentation discussed that revenue came in above the estimate, which on our side of the picture's a really, really good thing these days, but that gave us about $1.6 million, but that has been included in, that was included in the estimates for fiscal 13. That's how we were able to come up with almost $3 million to give to schools, or appropriate or provide to schools, was by having that money built into the 13 estimates. So, for all practical purposes, going into 14, it's gone. So, what do we have left? We have funding issues that were discussed at the last meeting. Well, let me go back here. In future, it's gone. You still have the $1.1,570.80 that's in your 5.6 million, one-time only to spend. As ongoing dollars, it's been budgeted. So, the future funding issues, we talked about roads, if you want to allocate monies for roads from that undistributed pot over here in this last box would be the place. You talked about $335,000. There is still remaining about $51,000 from amounts you've reserved before for roads that was not needed by VDOC for the roads on the list. So, you have that, and then what other amount you would like to allocate to roads, we would recommend they come from this undistributed source. The other thing, which I cannot hardly believe, that it is time again to talk about reassessment, but it's time again to talk about reassessment. So, when we look at that, what we're going to have to do, what we estimate to get a pricing back, we have to set up a board of equalization. The difference this time is going to be, we don't have Building C to place them in, so we're going to have to find space for them to be. All those things together, we're guessing it's going to be between $600,000 and $700,000 for the reassessment project. And then there are also maintenance projects, I know at the joint meeting with schools, they talked of some, we know of some we have on our own, and it may be that some of these dollars need to be allocated to that, that would be up to the board. And I included these two things from the rating agency comments, because at our community meeting, Mrs. Perkins brought up the fact of going to New York and the discussion around reserves, and it reminded me that, to look at their last report on the ratings, and there are two, and I just extracted two of the quotes from it, where both S&amp;P and Moody's talk about, it was the strength of the reserve and having reserves in place that they cite as helping contain or maintain our current rating. And so, that's the reason we look at them seriously and recommend adding to them, because they are important in that big picture. So, that's all I have to present at this point. I'll be glad to try and answer any questions, or...
Any questions or comments, the board members?
I was just going to add to what Carol said, the primary reason we wanted to go through this, is I know at the last meeting, there were some questions about if we were to look at allocating some money for revenue sharing for roads, you know, where was that money going to come from, and how did we have that set up? So, we wanted to make sure the board was familiar with this again. And then we had also talked a little bit about the reserves that, or the amounts that, from the one-time money that we had recommended, be set aside for reserves, but no action had been taken on those yet, so...
Yes, ma'am?
Go on.
One more time. How much money do we have that could be expended from the one-time money, plus whatever reserves around there? How much? What's the total?
Okay, if you look at this chart...
Yep.
Okay, see that? You have your current reserves that we always maintain. If you went with our recommendation, you would add almost $3 million. Again, it was $20,000 less than, the windfall amount was $20,000 less. So, that would be, and you see the totals over here, 6.5 million.
All right, I just want to be sure where we're coming from.
Okay, but let me, that's just in what we recommended be reserved. Now, here's where I think it gets confusing, and I want to make sure everybody's clear. When you come over here and you look at 5.6 there, that hadn't been reserved or allocated for anything, and that is available, should the board want to use it for roads, or maintenance, or other items. That has not been incorporated in any reserves.
Okay, well, I specifically wanted to bring up the animal shelter, after all of us received the email from Jason Shelton. It's sort of a, it really, Ms. Perkins alerted me to the fact the email was there, because I was out doing my walk, and when I got home and read it, it really sort of tore at my heart, that we would have this situation going on in our animal shelter with the loss of the dogs, because we can't sanitize the animal shelter. And the frustration that Jason expresses in this email, and some of the questions that he asked, I think we need to address by at least tonight, and I would be willing to do this when we go out of work session. I think we need to make it clear to the public that that $1 million that was suggested to be put aside for the animal shelter is put aside for the animal shelter, because I think he makes a valid point when he says, you know, how, how do you expect, you know, to raise revenue, to get people to contribute, when we haven't even really made the commitment? And I don't know as far as the rest of the things there that are in that box, or how we want to go about it, but I think that I would really be in favor of making a public commitment to the volunteers and to our citizens, that that $1 million is in the animal shelter reserve, and that's where it's going to be spent. So, that's what I wanted to bring up this evening.
And I've got a copy of that email with...
Did you all get to see his email?
Yes.
Does anyone have a copy?
I got the email, and I certainly think that that $1 million need to go for that. But it seems to be also a problem in this board, there seems like where it's going to be, seems to be more important than if it's going to be. And that kind of bugs me a little bit, you know, I don't know what it can be bought for, but I raised this question back two months ago, about the holiday store down here, so five acres of land, the building is big enough to have a tiny mall of an animal shelter. Like, again, I don't know that it can be bought for less than what we can build one for, time we do what we need to do it. But I do know that the Spade and Uter Clinic up here was wanting something close to the interstate with visibility, that's probably got the best visibility of any building I know of in this county or anywhere else to the interstate. And it seems to be, if we could ever lock in on something that we wanted, then we could get back and vote to purchase it, if we, you know, if it was in reason, and give people an incentive to make up the money, as he said in his thing, to go out and get volunteers and stuff, and get people to give money towards it, to fix it up, if we, and again, I don't know that it can be bought within reason, but I can't think of a better place that it could be.
Well, my point is that I would like, for us, or those that might agree with me, to publicly state and vote tonight, that the $1 million is in the reserve for the animal shelter. And I'm not talking about where it's going to be, what it's going to be, but we have made a commitment as a board, that we put this money aside for this project, because I think that's the missing component that has so frustrated the volunteers.
I don't have a problem doing that myself, but I do think we need to be a little more open-minded about where we're going to put something.
I think what you're saying as big as that, you'd like to have a motion after we go out of work session, have this...
When we leave, I want to make the motion that that $1 million is put aside, and it says animal shelter reserve fund, and it's for that purpose.
Right. I think, too, I've had some other volunteers talk to me about some of the things that are wrong in that current shelter, and how everything from not having any lights, not having any air, not have any, I mean, you know, not being able to get maintenance on the current shelter. People, you know, you don't want to put a great deal of money in it, but just ordinary things that you need to be able to take care of the animals, it's just not there. And so, I, you know, I would be willing, really, to support such a motion, simply because we need to get started, then. I mean, we've been talking about it for a long time, and if there's a $1 million there, then that's going to, that's going to do something. And our administration would know to get started on trying to determine what's a suitable place, if it's at the same place where it is, but at a different configuration, or, and as Jason said in his email, I think, to encourage people to want to give, you know?
And that's the, that's the key thing that I wanted to express, and I mentioned that during the budget as well, is, as the volunteers and some of these agencies try to go out and talk up support for a new facility, one of the first questions of somebody that's considering a donation, either a corporate or philanthropic group, whoever, you know, their first question's going to be, well, what's the county's commitment, what's the county prepared to do? And as I shared with several of you, if you've set aside money in reserve, again, it's not saying, it's not saying this is what the building's going to look like, it's not saying this is where the building's going to be, but it is saying that the board recognizes that this is a need that's got to be addressed, and that usually is a good enough signal to someone that's thinking about donating money, that will, hey, if they've set aside a million, I'll put in some money to help with it as well.
And I wanted to say, too... And I wanted to say too, that, you know, when we've talked about volunteers in a lot of different areas, I think the volunteers we have working at this animal shelter are phenomenal. They really do. They, they collect things for those dogs, try to make toys for them, try to do every, I mean, they are just unbelievably dedicated to what they're doing. And it certainly is very beneficial to us, and it's beneficial to the county to have volunteers like we have there at the, such as we have there at the animal shelter.
Well, do these, does the animal shelter maintenance, I would assume that the current animal shelter, that when maintenance is needed, as Ms. Perkins is referring to, does that show up on our maintenance needs somewhere? I mean, we talked about county maintenance, and we talked about school maintenance, and we had a paper that said that was the estimate of the schools, and this was the estimate of the counties, but nothing was broken down. And now we have, you know, you could use some of this money for maintenance. Well, does the animal shelter ever, is there ever a figure on just to maintain, I mean, I hate to say, I'm embarrassed. I think it's inhumane. I think to have the volunteers out there trying to save other dogs from catching probo, I mean, I just, this to me, I can't really be objective about this particular thing. I'm more an emotional level. I just can't believe this is 2012, and we're Montgomery County, Virginia, and we have this problem. Okay, let me just get that out there. So my next question is, is there anything, like Ms. Perkins is saying, that we could do in the current situation to help?
I think we have spent, we have money in the budget for maintenance at the existing shelter. The issue with the existing shelter, and Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, is it is of, it's of a poor design. It's of a construction that really, we've done everything we can do. Chair Politis was asking me that earlier about cleaning it and sterilizing it. You know, it's, the way the structure's constructed, we can only do so much with the facility.
That is your biggest problem. There is an animal control maintenance account that's in general services in the budget that's with animal control. They do the best they can do. And I think, again, I can't say enough about Jason and the volunteers. I don't know where we would be without all the effort they put forth. And I think it's just an issue of, it gets to the point, I mean, the finishes are so bad. You know, part of the issue in talking, and I think Jason presented it to you before about why does it cost so much? Well, you need these things. You can clean. It's a different kind of thing to prevent disease. There's HVAC thing, and you have nothing over there. And I think you all are aware of that. We've spoken about it many, many times. So I think they're doing the best they can do with what they've got to work with. And I don't think there's some kind of fix. I'll certainly go back and ask and see if there's anything we can do now to try and better address this. But I think it's just to the point, you can do all you can do. And one of the issues, and I'm not sure if Jason mentioned it in his email, is the fact that to prevent this kind of thing from happening, you have space to have isolation rooms. So that when you identify an animal with that, just as you would in a hospital or something else, you put them isolated away from the others, and that space isn't available. So there are many, many issues. You all are aware of them. But again, I think they're just doing the best they can do with what they've got to work with. And it's just beyond doing very much with it.
Well, that parvovirus, I think you made a good point too. Like, what if, you know, one of us had a dog, and the dog got out, the dog inundated the shelter, and the dog was exposed, then your dog is going to go down too. I mean, I mean, it's serious. It's a really serious thing. And so any, you know, any help, you know, after we go out of work session, just to, if we could dedicate just that so the volunteers know and citizens know. And then I think maybe, you know, we should get some kind of fundraising thing together.
Well, I mentioned that as well.
I'd be willing to start to get it together and let's go.
If we could find the right building to put it in, rather than going and having to have all these plans and starting from scratch up, you could probably end it in three months.
Well, you would have to rent a thing, a building, to meet what, I guess, what they're trying to do. You'd have to, you know, you can't just move into a building because evidently the reason that we're having all these processes is we don't have the right makeup of the building.
Drains. Yeah. Everything has to work. But that's why you have people that may not do those things to make them.
Mr. Tucker?
A couple of things. And I may be in a minority in regards to the $1 million set aside. I look at some of the needs throughout the county, and I look at some of the budget things that we're facing. I had a meeting with the sheriff, and we was talking about some of the plumbing that is in our jail that was installed in the 1950s. We have human beings in the Montgomery County Jail who are dealing with issues. We have guards at the Montgomery County Jail who at times are, it's 30 or 40 people, or inmates per guard. And so when we look at the bottom line, and we start saying that it's $3 million is what the new shelter is going to cost, it's hard for me to set aside $1 million when I know that there are a lot of needs in regards to the issues that we have with students, issues we have with our citizens. And so that's difficult for me to set aside $1 million. I recognize that we have an issue out there. My dog, I have two dogs, one of which came from that shelter. We went out there. My wife was somewhat surprised that that's what the state of Montgomery County Dog Shelter was. I recognize those things, okay? But at the same time, it's hard for me to get my head around a $3.2 million dog now. Now, one of the other things I would like to ask, if we could get the staff to take a look at, I noticed the town event is part of the community in regards to, they do shelter animals, cats and dogs, if you remember from my presentation in the budget. If we're going to start looking at potentially expanding and looking at cats, I would want to see if the towns are willing to kick in some money to help us to be able to take care of this, so it's not just our problem. I would be willing to set aside a portion of $1 million and would be willing to vote on it tonight. But I would not be willing to vote in favor of that. It's not that I believe that it's a good thing that animals are contracting to disease, but I believe that there's so many demands on our budget we have to prioritize. Now, I also recognize what Craig has been telling us since I got on the board, which is we are not in state compliance. I also recognize that. But I talked with the sheriff, I think we're probably borderline within state compliance at our jail.
Well, then why don't we look, why don't we take that as a concern with this other money that we have over here?
I'm willing to talk about this. But I want to make sure that I'm talking from, I know what the dollars are. I want to have a chance to sit down with the sheriff without just saying, okay, we're going to set aside this amount of money. I want to know, hey, tell me what exact amount you need to bring, able to bring it up. And that's just an example that hit me while we were sitting here. It's, and again, I mean, I've got animals, I love animals, but at the same time, I just feel like we've got to prioritize. And I understand I may be in the minority.
Ma'am?
Yeah, just two things. I mean, from the, from the description though, I mean, it seems like everything we've heard about the shelter is that right now, any maintenance that we devote to this, any monies that we devote to this for maintenance, I mean, we're basically pouring it down a drain, is that, you know, we're just going to continue to kind of waste money in this crap shelter that really should be, should have been dealt with a long time ago.
And I do want to point out, it is currently in compliance. My concern is, because we're right on the edge, that at any point, we could be declared out of compliance. I mean, we are, I want to make that clear, we are, we would not be, we'd close it down if we were out of compliance.
I'm sorry, I have that. Thank you for correcting.
But I do, but I do have some real concerns because of the age, and candidly, the inadequacy of the facility, that we have some real challenges.
The second thing is, I just had another question for Carol. And I think you said this twice. And I just want to, want to be sure that I heard this correctly, is that this $5.6 million, is that is unallocated one-time money?
Yes.
That is available to us right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So that could go for issues that are involved with maintenance?
Yeah, it is, it is, it is a different, it didn't come from the taxes. It's just an excess of revenues, over expenditures that ended up in the fiscal year, we ended up to the good. So it is money that can also be allocated. Normally, what you've done in the past is you just let that roll forward into the next year, and it kind of goes up and down. But we do, we did, I mean, I want to give a lot of credit to the staff and the departments. They've managed their budgets incredibly tight. And so we've, we've been able to have some excess for, we've reduced some expenditures, but.
And let me go back to being the finance person now. We're not suggesting you spend all of it.
Thank you.
I mean, it's not there, it has to go.
That's right.
But it is available if necessary to meet certain needs. We have been accumulating it over a number of years. But yes, you are correct.
Yeah. And my question is pointed in that, that, you know, it's, it's one thing to keep saving money so it's rolled over. And I'm certainly not suggesting that we might spend all of it. But, you know, at some point, I mean, it's worth dealing with some of these long-term issues. Instead of just saying, oh, we have this nice little pot of money over here, which we could use to do X, Y, or Z with, and we should actually do X, Y, or Z.
Well, maybe what we need to know is, we need to know, maybe the board needs to know, these kind of issues, instead of like, well, you know, Chris knows about the plumbing in the jail. I don't know about the plumbing in the jail. I mean, maybe we need to know, if there's serious, serious maintenance issues out there that we're just letting go by, that some money could be used for. Maybe we need to know of those issues. Maybe that would help.
Ma'am, I ask one question. Refresh my mind. As we are renovating the courthouse for a public safety building, do we put any money aside to do anything as far as the jail is concerned?
We initially had put money aside, if you remember, several years ago, to do the public safety building renovation and the jail renovation. The monies that, the estimates were woefully low on both projects. And the board, several years ago, directed that the money that was set aside for the jail, that that project could be deferred to a later date, and that the monies that we had set aside for the two projects would go towards renovating of the public safety building. Now, that being said, one of the issues that I became aware of, and talking with the sheriff, was a security issue in the jail, that with the upgrade of, with the new security system and the new courthouse, part of the project for the other two buildings, the public safe, the courthouse to be renovated to a public safety building, and for the jail, there were projects slated for both those to upgrade the security so that the security throughout the entire complex would be strong. We did take some of the money that was in that pot for that project and go ahead, and matter of fact, I think it's being bid out now, to upgrade the security in the jail. Because that is, that's a protection issue for the officers too. We've, we've had some issues with doors and cameras. And so we're definitely doing that because that was paramount to the, it's for the, it's for the deputies. It's also for the inmates, just to ensure that everything works like it's supposed to and is secure. But no, we've probably, we've got a number of other, I'm not as familiar with the, with the plumbing concern, but that project simply got deferred. It's not going away. We've still got issues to deal with with that.
So there's really not any money in the pot that we have that, where we could use that money for plumbing or for some?
Well, you could, you could, yes, you could, from this money, absolutely.
From this money?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
But not from the other part of money?
Not from, not from the funds we borrowed to do the projects initially, because the expense of redoing the courthouse for the public safety building became so much. The board indicated that that was the priority, was to get that building renovated.
Yeah, I remember that. But I just wanted to be sure that there was nothing there that we could use. But it would seem to make sense to me to be upgrading, if the plumbing is really bad, some things like that, while we're working on the public safety building.
Can I make a kind of a general?
Seems like that would make sense to me. But again, I don't know what's wrong. I mean, this is the first I've heard too. So I don't know how much money that would take to do that. Because I, do we have any estimates anywhere?
Instead of, can I, I mean, maybe instead of focusing on this one thing that Chris just brought up right now, since we don't know anything about it, nobody knows anything, is that, you know, maybe it would be useful, and I would ask the rest of my board members if they would like to see this as well, is perhaps the staff to prepare like a list of 10 critical maintenance issues.
Right.
You know, that, that we could actually devote these monies to, you know, gather some information about how much it would cost, how critical they are. And because, you know, again, like Mary was saying, like, we just don't, don't know.
Right.
And we're kind of, you know, wobbling around, saying, well, maybe we could do this, and this, and this. But we don't know anything. So it's, it's just kind of shooting in the dark.
Well, you say it better than I do. But that's the direction I was going, was to try to get the money for those critical issues.
I was going to ask the questions of the cost. They already got answered.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm still in favor of going ahead and putting the $1 million
up for the dog shelter. But there was something else that hits my mind that when we start talking about the jail, it brought to mind something that we should have. And that's Mr. Young over here at the youth detention.
That's coming too.
You know, there's a thing that
That's coming too.
Almost is completely not working. That, not just Montgomery County, there's some other counties that are supposed to be helping on that. But we are the major user of it, is my understanding. And if we are the major user of it, we are the one that's going to have to start the ball rolling in order to get other people in on it to do something with that. Because these, these are used, and if you bring them up as trash, when they get to be grownups, they're going to still be trash. So, you know, they need to have something to where they can say, hey, that really is, was a good time that I had, that I learned something, and I'm not going to go and do the things that I was doing.
Well, that's definitely going to be on the, when you see the next cap, long-term capital needs plan, that's, that facility's going to be on it as well, because we've got to address that concern.
Yeah, the bottom line of my, what I was getting at is that we've got plenty of things that will take up more than all of this money.
Oh, yes.
So, you know, we can only handle one or two of them at a time, and it seems like I think we've made a promise, basically, we've made a promise back three, four, five months ago. And I think it needs to be fulfilled.
I agree.
Anybody else got any?
Maybe the Harley Davidson building would make a good shelter for, I mean, detention homes, too.
Well, I'm going to make my comment on the animal shelter. I realize I need it. I'm in a somewhat agreement with Mr. Tucker. I hate to allocate a whole million dollars when we've got other priorities. And Mr. Crease just came up with a priority, and I don't remember the dollars. There was some kind of dollar
What?
To recommend for that project at the Juvenile Detention Home. Does anybody remember that?
We don't have any. I don't remember any figures.
Are there any figures?
Well, to my understanding, when I, I did tour over there with Mr. Young, and he was saying that they're in the process of applying for federal funding. And so that were that to happen, most of it, the new facility or the re, the facility will actually be paid for by federal and state dollars.
We'll talk about the detention house. Okay, where we are currently, there's a process you need to follow in order to even get on the list for state funding. There's a moratorium on state funding, but you don't want to skip the process. Because if you could ever manage to get any, you won't get it if you don't do the process. So the first step of that was the needs assessment, which was completed. And now there's a planning study. That's underway currently. And so once that's done, we'll have a better idea of what the total cost is going to be. Then the options come into play about how do you do that? And there's everything on the table from ask all the jurisdictions, just give the money so you can do it, down to, you know, borrowing the money and building it into your per diem rate, back to the jurisdictions each year. So where we are is currently in conducting that planning study phase. And Joe, I'm sure we'll be back to update everyone once that phase is over with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
At any rate, we do have a lot of projects. I like the idea of getting a list together, looking at
We're working on that as we speak.
What kind of priorities we feel are most essential. I know the animal shelter is essential. I'd be more than happy to, you know, use a good portion of that money. We have set aside for it to do it. I'd also like to have some idea we have set aside for it to do it, I, I'd also like to have some idea of, maybe, well, how, how many dollars could we expect from contributions, is there any way to gauge that, or?
Well, no, you gotta, you gotta have a fundraising campaign, and the more that we put in, like, if we make the commitment for a million dollars, that's a million dollars, and, and I think then, then, you know, we, we, we need to, what we need to do is establish a fundraising committee, whether it be like, um, you know, working with the volunteers, getting some key people in there that know how to raise revenue, and, and start getting some money to come in, I mean, I don't know if you have to create a foundation, or what you have to do to get the money going, but, you know, it should be able to do something.
You don't have to find, to do anything with a foundation, you can use existing foundations, there's plenty of them.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, here's, just a thought.
Yeah, we got the community foundation, everything.
What if we were to say, commit a half a million dollars?
No.
Okay, of this million, and then match dollars for every dollar we can raise in funds.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion for the million dollars, because I'm gonna tell you, Jim, you, you've heard this story before, I've been on this board, this is my seventeenth year, I've been asking for this for seventeen years, okay, and, you know, I very rarely, you know, I, I'm, I try to support what I think we all need for our county, for our districts, I'm very passionate about this, I'm gonna make the motion for a million dollars, okay, if the motion passes, then it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't, but I'm gonna make the motion for a million, I, I believe that's what's needed, so we can say to people, we, Montgomery County, in the year 2012, are committed to do something about this problem.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what I'm gonna do.
I'm gonna, is there anybody else, the people down there?
I'm asking Gary, we were having a discussion, what do we pledge for that Meadowbrook Library, remember, when we were doing all this?
That was more than a million dollars.
Yeah, I don't know, about 1.8 that we put into, I think.
I don't know, I know that, well, I'm just...
But we had a fifty-fifty, or a matching fund thing on there, didn't we, Gary?
But then we went back and we gave more.
They came up with seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Gosh, off a bunch of money.
Yeah.
It was over a million dollars that the citizens down there gave for it.
I thought they came up with about, right at a million, or seven fifty.
And we, you know, they came up with a lot.
We were gonna do it over three or three, and we decided to do it in one while we were working.
We talked about doing it in phases, and...
Yeah, ended up doing it all at once.
Go ahead and do the whole thing.
But we gave, we, we spent two or three million dollars on that building, didn't we?
But that whole thing there has been a godsend.
Yeah, I think we spent 1.8, and then whatever they raised.
Yeah, but we went up, and then we came back and gave some more.
I think the total we gave was 1.8, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't care what it was, can you look that up?
Look it up, please.
Craig, can Carol look that up, please?
I was thinking about that project when I'm thinking about the animal shelter.
No, I'm just thinking that we have, we have pledged money in, in the past for, for projects that we know are important.
Mr. Brown?
I think that we make the commitment for a million, and then we can decide how to do it later to get past this point, if you gotta be a dollars, says, well, if they match a million with donations or whatever, we can decide how we're gonna do that later, because we can talk about it like long.
Anytime you've got a pot of money...
You can draw a lot of money.
The people will start giving money, it's surprising how many people out here have got a lot of money.
But you gotta make the first.
That, you've got it, but you've gotta have that commitment in order to get it, you know, you may get another million dollars right on top of it, but you're not gonna get it until somebody makes a commitment to do it.
All right, are we ready to move on to the next subject?
Three of five, yes, sir.
And that is revenue sharing, I believe?
Revenue-sharing funds for fiscal year 2013, 2014, we actually talked about this at last, at a previous meeting, under tab F, um, you've got potential projects, and of course, one page scanned in sideways, so we all have to turn our heads sideways. I also wanted to pass out two pieces of information to you, I think one of the questions that was asked, uh, last meeting was, where were we with our current revenue-sharing projects, and, uh, Steve Sandy, and Judy Kaiser, and, uh, folks at VDOT have worked to pull the information together, it wasn't quite as simple as we thought, but, uh, this list shows the, uh, six projects that are currently, uh, allocated with, with revenue-sharing money, the Allegheny Springs project, we've allocated 363,544, to date, we've expended 71,762, on Craig's Creek Road, we've allocated 469,193, expended 461,767, that project is closed out, Willis Hollow Road, we allocated 400,000 for that project, 244,093 has been expended to date, VDOT says that all the expenditures on that project should be processed by January 1, Yellow Sulfur Road is the big one that we, uh, have in our previous dollars, that one's 698, 697,868, only 28/8 of that has been expended so far, but expect construction, uh, on that to be completed by July of next year, and of course, the two most recent ones that we've talked about, the Meadow Creek Road project and the Tyler Road project that are gonna be funded by the developers, of course, none of the money has, has been expended for that yet, uh, so, in looking at the list, Craig's Creek Road is nearly done, Willis Hollow Road, uh, the construction's completed, the Allegheny Springs project is expected to be completed by the end of November, and then the big one yet, the cars Yellow Sulfur Road. Another piece of information, I think, uh, that someone had asked for, was traffic counts on some of these roads, uh, we, I appreciate Steve pulling this together, this is daily traffic estimates on some of the roads, and, um, if you flip through, you can see, uh, the, the roads that you talked about at your previous meeting for potential revenue-sharing projects, Brush Creek Road, 180 vehicles a day, Mount Pleasant Road, um, one section has 180 vehicles a day, one section has 130 a day, and Steve, if I'm interpreting these wrong, get up and scream at me, uh, Blue Spring Road, 110 vehicles a day, Old Sourwood Road, 180 vehicles a day, uh, and I believe that was it for that. Also, you've got maps in your tab, under tab F, that show the number of residents along those roads as well, um, because, again, at our last meeting, we talked about Old Sourwood Road, uh, portions of Mount Pleasant Road, Brush Creek Road, and Blue Springs Road, I believe, were the ones.
Now, when we're looking at Brush Creek, are we looking at from the pilot to Puff School, is that the eight tenths of a mile?
Is that?
Okay.
Yes.
Oh.
Well, while we're talking about Old Sourwood and et cetera, just for those of you who aren't aware, we had a project out there a couple of weeks ago, where we used a different process, uh, one of the things we've had on dirt roads forever is a dust problem, and one of the products we applied down there was a product called Dustless, we had a, about a half inch of rain, a week ago Sunday, and I waited till Wednesday or Thursday to go back and look at the road, and the areas where we supplied the dustless, there was absolutely no dust, the areas we didn't, it was a cloud behind the car, so, that has worked initially, they say it works six months to a year, and each time you apply, you have to apply less. The three or four hundred feet they use the, uh, poly pavement on, uh, all I can tell you is it's hard as a rock, nobody had any problems with slipping or anything on it after the rain, no tearing up the road after the rain, but we need to get through the winter, see what the salt does to it, see what traffic, weather, and things do to it, before we, you know, go any further with any commitment, now, we got a bill from the folks for our share of the freight, did you bring a copy of that? No. They, they gave us approximately, what, 10,000 dollars?
About 10,000 dollars worth of material.
10,000 dollars worth of material, 6,000 was the, uh, poly pavement, and, and then 2,000 was the, uh...
Dustless.
Dustless, somewhere in that area, the dust was covered probably a little more than a half a mile, so, if you don't, if you have to calcium fluoride four or five times a year to keep the dust, now, and you can do this once a year, I'm sure it'll be a good savings, and that might be something that we could use to, you know, help the dust control.
What's the life of that surface, that poly?
The poly pavement surface, they tell me, will last as long as asphalt or concrete, and it'll last eight or nine years.
Okay, the dustless?
It'll be patching, just like asphalt or concrete.
Okay.
You patch it with the same material as it met it with.
All right.
Just pull it up.
And the dustless road, what?
Pardon?
How long does the dustless?
They say it'll last six months to a year, but each time you apply it, you don't have to apply as much as the first time, and they recommend you apply it once, and then reapply it, and then you won't have to apply it, you know, maybe till the next year, this is what they're saying, we'll see, you know, what happens.
Yeah.
But so far, I'm impressed, and...
You have to see how it does during the winter.
We have to see it, get through the winter.
Yeah, right, right.
And be that as, you know, prepared for that, and...
But you were saying it was in, in a state where they put this down that had lasted for X number of years, in a very cold climate, et cetera?
Yeah, they use it in Pennsylvania quite a bit.
I would think that if the dustless works well, that our highway department will be using that instead of some of these other chemicals they're using.
Well, that's where we're...
Providing, providing its cost, you know.
Cost-effective.
Effective, it...
What did they spend on the dustless, 2,000 for about a half a mile, and like I said, if you only have to apply it once and it keeps the dust down, it'd be a godsend to some of these people's on these dirt roads. Yeah.
I've been on some of them, I'm gonna tell you, one comes one way and you're going the other, but you gotta sit there and just wait for about 10 minutes to, for it to clear up, we can see.
We'll see how that's going, and I just wanted to let folks know about it, and I'll be checking on it again next week, or this week, I guess, you know, it's not too far from the house.
Well, with this information, at the last meeting, there's a, there's a spreadsheet in your, in your packet under tab F, we've talked about...
How do you read that upside?
You have, you have to cock your, that's, that's one of the...
I mean, I don't get it.
Right, you have to turn your head, I'll excuse this while we all look, um, there were fi, uh, five projects that were talked about for possible revenue-sharing funds, one was Brush Creek Road, about eight tenths of a mile, the county share of that was 230,000, uh, Blue Springs Road, approximately three tenths of a mile, uh, county share of that's 87.5, uh, an alternate on Blue Springs Road was about 37.5, uh, the Mount Pleasant Road, a half mile, was 250,000, and Old Sourwood Road for about a mile was, uh, again, about 85,000, so, you had identified, and we should've put a subtotal on that, 170, 400, 650, about 700,000 dollars worth of projects.
Close to 700.
About 700,000 dollars worth of projects, and I think what the board wanted to do in work session tonight was talk about how many, all, none, some, but, what you wanted to do with that.
Are you ready for that discussion?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't mind starting, I, I certainly like to have the, uh, dollars it takes to do the Mount Pleasant, it's, uh, been a long time, and, the state's getting ready to, to do up another half mile on it, and that only leaves that half mile, but it's the worst one of the bunch, and, we need to get that and get it over with, and be through with, with everything we need to be through with, it's not a whole lot of dollars in the realm of things, and it would take care of that road, I hope, once and for all, and, it's, it's just a dangerous road, I mean, it's, anybody's been down it knows it's a dangerous road.
I was running one the other day, going to your, going down, what's your place, Fisher's View, I decided to take it, it's been a long time since I've been on, phew!
I'm not gonna last for any money for that.
What Fisher's View?
Fisher's View.
Oh, it is, one bank, the first bank coming down, I almost thought the van was gonna turn over.
That's, as far as I know, the only road in the state that closes in the winter.
Yeah.
Wow.
I mean, absolutely.
There's one over Mountain Lake, too.
They close it up, I mean, it's...
There's one over Mountain Lake, too.
There's one over Mountain Lake, going back down the other side.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, I think I have.
That's a pretty good ride down there.
But that's not as bad as Fisher's View, as far as the turns and stuff.
Oh, no, that's, over there's not near by Fisher's View, Fisher's View is a terrible road.
Yeah, all right, so you're, would you propose that we do all of them?
I would, I think it's 250,000 dollars.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Plaidus as well about, I mean, 'cause most of these, almost, well, almost all of these are in your district, so, do you have a sense of what really needs to be done from the rest of the list?
You.
Yeah.
You.
What's that?
Sorry, is that, the rest of the list of suggested projects are entirely within your district, so I was wondering if, I, I'd like to hear your opinion on it.
I, I would like to see them all done.
Okay, is there, is there a hierarchy, is it one or two that, more so, or are they equally?
Old Sourwood would be the highest priority, since it's already started, I would hope by the time we're ready to do, some of these projects will have some viability, and the other product, which I think will save some money, uh, just looking at what they did, uh, there were some things that happened on that project that went, that it didn't go perfect, there's a machine we can buy for less than all these projects together, that'll last for 50 years of roads, that we might talk, be that into, looking into, about a half a million dollars, but, it'll, they, I'm told, you can do a mile of road in an hour and a half.
What is, what is your second, that's, that's a small one, uh, what is your second one on the list that you...
I, I really don't, I really don't wanna get rid of any of them, uh...
If you wanna do them, do one. We're talking about for revenue sharing, you know, get rid of them.
I know, but, uh, you know, people are gonna come in my neighborhood, but I'd give up Brush Creek to get some of the other stuff done, and get that one done next, but I really hate to, because that's a real bad washboard up there every time it rains, and, but if I had to get down by me, it's, I'd put the other one in the pilot, and...
Well, you're just gonna have to pick one, I mean...
Well, I don't wanna get rid of any, I'm gonna do any more.
Then you're probably not gonna get them, you know, you, you're gonna have to come up with one that, that you can finance for now, and, and save the others for later would be my thought.
Well, we're talking 700,000 dollars.
It's not getting rid of them.
I've got 15 or 20 behind my way if I want to jump on it, yeah.
Well, this was, you know, you guys brought it...
I'm trying to be realistic and, and get something that we can afford.
Well, how much are we talking about putting into it?
So, you're suggesting we fund them all?
Pardon?
You're suggesting we fund them all?
If it's 700,000 dollars, I would suggest we do them all.
Yeah, what, what, what you're requ, everything that's on that list right now is 687,500.
Our share.
Okay, all right, Steve's pointing at me, yes.
It's not a question of if it's Blue Springs, it's one or the other, it's not both.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So...
Yeah, I'll, I think Carol pointed out, there's about 51,000.
Thank you, yeah.
So, I came up with about 600 for all of them.
All right, now, Blue Springs, Steve, what are we talking about on Blue Springs?
It's, uh, if you look on that map, it's that little section out...
I can't read maps.
...Yuliski County line, um, you had received some complaints, and, and VDOT had received some complaints about the, the work they're doing out there.
Well, see, I was on that road a couple of weeks ago, and there's one... Well, see, I was on that road a couple of weeks ago, and there's one little section that's less than two tenths of a mile. Everything else is paved.
Yeah.
And beyond that section, uh, we can't get the road away.
Yeah, it's three, three tenths of a mile, what Chris has...
It's less than, yeah, it's less than a quarter.
And if it's done as a rural rustic, you're gonna talk about 30.
Yeah, you're not talking about anything. So, you know, I'd like to see that one done. It's cheap and easy.
Just, just like you were talking earlier, there's lots of other projects. These are just the ones that have kinda come from citizens and V-Dot, you know, in the past six months to a year that, uh, requested be done. And just clarify one thing for Mr. Creed. I heard the comment, done once and for all, this will not finish Mount Pleasant Road. So, just wanna make sure you understand that this is not nearly enough money to finish Mount Pleasant Road. The idea here is to take a small bite and try to fix that curve, the, the real bad curve, and then get it ready for ultimately, you know, paving it all the way through in a complete project. So, uh, $500,000 is not gonna finish that road.
Well, then maybe we need to ask for more while we're here.
I just wanna make sure that we are gonna...
You know, the last, the last time that we were here, I thought you said that you tried to hook up that thing from where the road comes down from Christiansburg and stops there, and then extends down that worst part of it.
Right, but, but only like a spot improvement of the curve is, is what's being proposed.
Oh, you're not figuring on doing the road?
Not the entire, it would not be an entire improvement project of that road. This...
Do you know how much is down through there?
How much? The distance?
How, what's the distance of the road?
Well, the whole distance, I think, is eight tenths of a mile. Or, let me see.
Wow.
Well, about a half of a mile, but, you know, it's not...
A half a mile is what's on here for the...
But it's not gonna be a half a mile curve that's fixed. It's, it's only gonna be within the half a mile of the project to straighten out the worst curves through there. It's not gonna be a complete reconstruction project of that whole half a mile section.
It's not gonna do anything to fall off the edge of that thing or nothing?
Well, not completely, so...
In other words, don't go down that again.
It's, it's got to take a small bite first and then...
Well, but if we're gonna throw out big bites, I wanna make sure I get my big bite.
Well, I've got more dirt road than you have.
Uh, you want me to...
My long shot. ATL, I'll bet you.
You don't know how much area I've got in there. I've got a whole lot more area than you have.
Yeah, but all that stuff out there, it's paved. Mr. Bow.
I know.
Well, it appears if, if you backed out the, um, if you, if you did Blue Springs Road as a rural rustic and backed out that other number I had added in, thanks for pointing that out, Steve, the number's 602,500. And then if you used about 50,000 of the money that's already in reserves, you'd be looking at appropriating about 550. And that's for what's on the list right now.
And I need the $250,000 to, to get that.
And then that would be, that would be out of that 5.6?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then we have to think about assessment out of that 5.6 probably as well?
Yes, sir.
If I remember. Okay, so that's, we're at 1.3.
We're spinning it fast.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long.
Just while we're in work session, I, I wouldn't mind seeing 250,000 spent in Mr. Creed's district, and then 250,000 spent in Mr. Politis's district, and then we're looking at 500,000. We would need to allocate approximately 450,000. We've got 50,000 in it. And that way it would be balanced between the two. Now, I have a few, I know that Bill's got some. I don't know about the other districts, how many dirt roads that everybody's got, but I would, that, that's something I would...
I've got 40% of the county's dirt roads.
Yeah, you've got the majority. I'm not, not, not claiming that.
And like I said, I back off on the back end of Brush Creek for now.
But that would give both of the districts and take care of both of them. I know we're in work session still, but that's just something I would throw out. So about 450,000 would...
Yeah, I, I need roads more than I need an animal shelter. That's my opinion.
I can, I can support that, what you're saying, Chris.
Yeah, and split it equally.
Yeah. I think as long as we look at these things to, we'll find out. We'll never have enough.
And, and I, and I guess I would like to wait and see on the poly pavement, you know, we allocate the money, but not spend it till after we see how it does.
Don't worry, it doesn't come that quick. We set up the money, but it doesn't get back that quick.
No, Mr. Clark said that that, that one mile, when he was here, and maybe someone can correct me, would go pretty quick because it would be seen as maintenance of the road rather than construction. And he seemed to think that that portion would go very, very quickly.
That's correct.
Other portions where gear is, is...
Reconstruction.
I'm just gonna get rocker load, I'm not gonna get any road.
Yeah. Alright, is that all we got on this one? What's the next one?
Next one is legislative priorities. And for that item, um, we do not have a tab. Do we have any, do you have anything for this?
I think it's in, it's on the agenda.
It, it, it is, it, yes, it is on the agenda, but when I looked over at Carol, she was ready to bounce, and I thought, okay, what have I forgot? I, I forgot that.
This is just something Ms. Biggs had brought up before about having new businesses to share with the rest of us. And this is something we've all did before.
I have one, thank you.
This is good.
Some new business.
It's a late game party.
Colorful.
Got some nice ones.
This is just, um, I think it was in fiscal year 10 or the legislative session during then, that there was another discussion about state funding and county funding and what needed to occur. I think Ms. Biggs mentioned, um, before about having something, one page you could talk from when you go to legislative day or with the legislators. The only difference between this and the, some of the charts that you've seen that we've used at the community meeting is we sort of turned this one around, and this is what was used before, instead of saying, "You state, cut all this and look at this," to try and just turn it around and say, "This is how much the counties had to put into these functions," and put the focus back on the fact that the county needed to increase dollars and how important it is to have revenue sources in order to generate the dollars to do that. So, we, um, had it up through fiscal year 10 and just included the most recent year for 13 with these functions that were primarily, at one point in time, traditionally state-funded, and as time has gone on, more and more counties, so...
Alright, I like this approach, 'cause we've tried that other approach, what, two or three years, and hadn't got anywhere with it, but if you sort of reversed it...
Well, you used this one before, too, and it's...
I was gonna say, we've used everything.
But this is good.
Well, at least it shows...
To have it together.
Yeah, and it, and it shows the stair steps the county has had to incur additional responsibilities for, and, uh, you know, I just think it's a travesty, especially with the commissioner and the treasurer, that, you know, we're now funding 89% of those operations.
Well, and, and I think they need to keep in mind that we're talking about a percentage of the total. The total increases, and the percentage is increased, so that's twice the impact when that occurs. So, anyway, just something to share with you, think about if that's what you, you'd like to have, if it's useful.
And, and the other legislative priorities, and that was pointed out, it's, it's an item under new business. We went ahead and placed it there in case you didn't wanna make any changes, but I do know that there was some discussion about a few others, so this is just your opportunity to discuss that resolution before we get into new business.
Do, do we have a meeting with the legislators before they take up all of this?
Yes, sir.
Could we have like several of these made up to give them all, maybe 50 of them, and tell them to please pass them out if they don't do anything else? You know, if they're afraid to talk, maybe they can just pass them out and see what kind of result we get from them, but they don't wanna seem to bring anything up that we ask them to, so maybe that would work. I don't know.
We'll have whatever you need. I guess on those, are there any recommended changes? We did make the change, and I believe Supervisor Biggs brought this up at the last meeting on the bullet point regarding the state's role in funding quality education by fully funding the SOQ, basing, basing teacher pay raises on actual positions, not just, not just SOQ. There was another piece in there, um, that was actually a carryover from several years ago, and I talked to the superintendent, and she said, "Really, the only folks that would benefit from what we were asking for would be the Northern Virginia counties." I said, "Well, we'll take that out."
Yes.
That doesn't help us in the county.
I think that's why we originally put it in, 'cause we were saying that it wasn't fair that they got, they got extra money and the other school systems didn't. I think that's how it got in there in the first place, but I don't even know if they're getting that now. I don't even know what's going on up there.
Brenda said she, she would suggest we leave it out, so I said, "Okay."
I'd just like to make one constructive suggestion on the way that they're listed. I, I just wanted, I would like to move the ending unfunded mandates, which is now the second bullet point, move that up. So that's the first one. Just to highlight that cap molded thing about the secondary roads, make sure that that's, that's absolutely emphasized, since that's probably gonna be at least discussed...
Yes, sir.
...this coming legislative session.
And we did go back. Another suggestion that came up was looking at categorizing them, but then we actually did that last year when we, when we read through the resolution, uh, the sentence that we inserted that says, or actually, it was in there last year, too, "The board further supports legislation that strengthens locality's ability to fund and deliver local services, including..." And everything under that is related to the locality's ability to defund and deliver local services. Um, that was the, that was the thought on that. We tried to tinker a little more, but we couldn't figure out a better way to say what we were trying to say.
Could we perhaps just, my comments are mostly just kind of superficial, but start from. Instead of deliver local services, I mean, that in some ways takes the, the onus off the state, and I'd rather see something like citizen services. I mean, these are, these are citizens of the Commonwealth, in that the state has a, has a duty as much as a locality.
What if, what if we said strengthens locality's ability to fund and deliver services to our citizens, including?
Yes, that would be, that would be fine.
Okay.
So, 'cause they're, they're not local service. I mean, these are, these are services, period.
Right.
We're just the ones that are made to deal with these things because the state is doing its job.
Right, it's county and state. We can certainly change that before we publish it. Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
This is a totally, we, we've talked about state, uh, but I was thinking about Ms. Blackburn's editorial talking about sequestration. We don't have a legislative agenda to invite Congressman Griffith or to contact our two senators. Uh, is that something that this board has ever entertained in the past, or do boards not do that type of thing? Uh, whether we talk about, you know, there's a current regulation that local jails can't grow their own food to feed their inmates due to USDA regulations, I've been told. Um, and whether we should, not tonight, um, but look at that as maybe a respective federal legislative agenda.
I've got on my list of things is after the November election, I think whoever's elected, re-elected in, in the federal offices, I think it would be good for this board to send a letter congratulating them on their le- election and/or reelection, and also reminding them that there's some things coming up very quickly in the, in the Congress that they need to focus on, or it could have tremendous impact on the localities. Normally, the one that causes the most harm to the localities is the state government, but with sequestration in particular, um, there, there's a pretty good chance we could get hammered pretty hard from the federal level on that.
Yeah, it's good.
Anyone else? Let's move on to the calendar.
Yes, sir.
Well, um, we never went out of work session. Are we supposed to go out of work session?
No, this is...
This is the next bill of work.
One more thing.
Yeah, this is all in work session. Under Tab G, uh, you have the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year 2014, which just absolutely boggles my mind. I don't know, I don't know where the time's going, but, um, this calendar reflects some of the important dates in January, February, March, and April regarding the proposed fiscal year 14 budget. Uh, the only date that I don't care for, and I've already mentioned to Carol as well, we've got it set because it's the third Monday in April, and that's traditionally when we've adopted the budget, but the third Monday in April in 2013 is April 15th, and I don't know if, I don't know if you wanna set your tax rate on tax day, but that's, that, that doesn't matter to me. I'll be, I'll be here whether you're here or not.
It's already paid by then.
Yeah, it better be. Uh, one other thing I wanna, yeah, one other thing I wanna mention on the county, uh, budget calendar, it's been tradition that the board adopt this calendar, uh, but it's not required that the bud, that the board adopt the calendar. That's just been a traditional thing. The reason that I'm gonna recommend that you just agree to the calendar by consensus is that inevitably, once we adopt the calendar, we start having conflicts with dates and meetings, and then you have to go back and make an amendment. You have to formally vote on an amendment to amend the budget calendar. And that's just an awful lot of work, as far as I see it, when, when there's no code necessity to adopt the budget calendar. So my recommendation is that if the board is okay with the budget calendar, that you agree to it by consensus, and then that way, when we have conflicts, we just come back again and agree by consensus to change it, but...
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's fine. I would make, I was looking at my calendar for the coming year, um, and I think Mr. Um, Mr. Matt's points well taken about the, the date of adoption of the, the final budget, is that I don't know if that's a really good day to, to do that, so perhaps we could look for, for another day then. Um, the other thing is that on the March the 28th, which is the day that the public hearing is, uh, for the advertised tax rate and budget, is that I know I may have a conflict with that day. I may be going to a conference, and although I wasn't here last year, and I wanna make sure that that doesn't happen again, since I know actually ahead of time. So, you know, if we could even, I don't know, if we need to have it on Thursday, I mean, usually that's the day I would leave, so if we could even just move it one day earlier, that would be fine, or if we wanted to move it to another week, that would be fine as well, so... Just wanna make everyone aware of that. And if, you know, everybody else wants to go ahead with that date, then I understand, but I want that, I'm happy to be flexible if somebody's got their calendar.
I'm flexible, too.
Yeah, you know, this one, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
This has nothing to do with that, but I'd like to say one thing more, 'cause it's bugging me. Under the directory we have in here, still have my phone number is 268-5203, and that is not a good number.
Okay.
Probably, nobody trying to get ahold of me will ever get ahold of me. Uh, 392-7651 will work. I do not have a landline.
Seven six, what now?
392-7651.
Wherever that is, we'll fix it.
I've seen it a couple places, so just now, run up on it there again, I said, "I better say something."
We'll fix it.
Alright, do we have a motion to go out of work session?
Motion to go out of work session.
Can we take a break after the, just a few minutes to stretch?
Yep.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. No call, please.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tutt?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Parkes?
Aye.
Sheriff Alvis?
Aye.
The rest, if, if we take a break, the rest of the committee should go.
Give me a break?
Yeah, the rest of it'll go pretty quick.
And point of information, where do you want me to put the animal shelter? Do you want me to put it under new business, or when we come back from break?
We can go down on Board Member's report.
Whenever you want.
Bring it up on the Board Member's.
Bring it up on the Board Member's.
Alright.
On the Board Member's report.
We, we won't jump in front of them.
Good evening, we're back. I'm gonna turn it low here. I hate this thing.
Oh, Lord, I'm in the directory, I don't need to be on that.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is new business, and the first item is new business is, uh, resolution adopting the county's legislative priorities. Do we have a motion?
So moved as we talked about, um, fixing it up with Matt's suggestions.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
End our conversation. Matt's suggestion.
Get a note of those.
Amendment.
Okay.
Is that an amendment, or?
No, it's just modifications to the resolutions.
Maybe, the only other thing I could suggest is when we print it up, you know how usually it's just black and white, I wonder if we should look at if there's something that needs to be read. Like, this is a red alert, and I don't know if there's, like, certain, I don't know if that would help or not, but just to draw their attention. I don't know.
We could always say, red alert.
Yeah, we operate in red.
Yeah.
All right. Same off.
But we're operating in red because of you.
Well, these are pretty nice chart here, all pretty colors.
Yeah, I like it.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
I think it's me.
Yeah. Aye. I take back one of my ayes.
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis? Aye. Set an eye.
All right, Subject B is a resolution concerning the adoption of the state budget in a timely manner. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, it really is better. I hope they get, are we going to give them a copy of this?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they need to understand, while we're all hanging by our thumbs from the ceiling, what's going on back in the localities when they don't do their work in a timely manner.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis?
Aye.
Set an eye.
Okay. May I end it now?
Yes.
Now, D.
Subject D is schedule public hearing ordinance amendment for tax relief for the elderly and handicapped. Do you have a motion?
So.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis?
Aye.
Set an eye.
Okay. May I end it now?
Yes.
Now, D.
Subject D is schedule public hearing ordinance amendment for tax relief for the elderly and handicapped. Do you have a motion?
So.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis?
Aye.
Set an eye.
Okay. May I end it now?
Yes.
Now, D.
Subject D is schedule public hearing ordinance amendment for tax relief for the elderly and handicapped. Do you have a motion?
So.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis?
Aye.
Set an eye.
Okay, the next item is county attorney's report.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I wanted to take this brief opportunity to update the board on the Fall Brink Merrimack 138 KV transmission line. If you remember, it's been a while now that AEP had come to this board asking for your support, or asking which route did you prefer back in, I believe it was 2010, that was Steve, and then the project got delayed, but eventually on February 9th, AEP had filed with State Corporation Commission an application, basically seeking permission to construct the 138 KV transmission line connecting their Fall Brink substation with their Merrimack substation. This is about a 7.5 mile line of new transmission line, and it's primarily in the county, there's a small portion in the town. The project's basically needed, based on what AEP submitted, because of growing electrical demands and to prevent overloading that serves thousands of customers both in the town of Blacksburg and Christiansburg. The hearing examiner issued his opinion, and he found that there was a need. He also found that the preferred route was the route that he recommends that the SEC approved, the transmission line being constructed on. And that's the route I gave, I just gave you a public notice map showing that route. That is also the same route that this board and the town of Christiansburg previously adopted resolutions in support of. And the reason the hearing examiner found that this route was the best route to build was that he found that it was both efficiently and effectively, it would allow the company to efficiently and effectively acquire both right away, it would allow them to build it cheaper, operate it cheaper, it would also have the minimum environmental impact, and also have the minimum impact on current residences, and with the projected land uses in the future for this area. So, based on all that, the hearing examiner approved that route, and that would go to the State Corporation Commission, and based on, it wasn't really a lot of, a lot of conflict in this application, so the SEC board will probably approve it when it meets, I'm not sure when the hearing is, probably in June or May, sometime around there. So, the reason I'm bringing it to your attention is, under the state statutes of the 2232 review, the planning commission is required to review this route now that we know, or pretty much know where it's going to be built, and confirm that it's in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan, which at this point, we believe it, they will make that finding, however, they still need to make that finding. And what I want to ask you is whether you want the planning commission to hold a public hearing or not. The way the code reads is that the commission may hold a public hearing, and then it says shall hold one if the board so instructs. If the planning commission finds that it's in compliance with the comp plan, and this board agrees with that, you would not take any action. If they find that it's not in compliance, and then you wanted to review that decision, then you would then take it up. But if you agree with the decision they make, then you would not, it would not come back before you. But I'm just trying to figure, would you want a public hearing or not? I think staff recommending, planning staff, yes, for a public hearing? Yeah. And it'd just be at the planning commission level.
What did we do the last time we had this thing go through, but we had a lot of controversy then about it, you know, the?
Oh, the, hell, is the big 750.
Right. So I know we had a lot of public hearings, but?
And this board actually entered in as a participant, and I'm asking if they not approve that. And they ended up not approving.
Right.
I don't think it hurts to have a public hearing, just to kind of update everybody what's going on. Not everyone may know what the SEC has decided, or the hearing examiner's decided.
Yes, sir.
I would just, I would say, I mean, for the sake of transparency, I would like to see a public hearing.
I would agree, but I wanted to point out, and Marty, you can tell me if I've got a conflict, in one of the proposals, it would have gone across or near Corum Holden's Corporation's property. I own a 26% stake in that, and so I don't want to do anything that would be a conflict or give the appearance of impropriety. If you think I should not vote even on whether we have a public hearing, I'll withdraw and decline the vote on that matter.
Yeah, I think just, I think it would make sense to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody else ready for the public hearing?
The public would be instructed to plan. It'd be at the planning level, not at our level.
Right. All right. All right, okay? All right?
Actually, that's all happened.
Thank you. County administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got several dates I want to make sure that the board has down. A couple of them are actually listed at the end of your agenda, but just wanted to remind you of our final community conversations meetings. That will be held next Monday, the 29th, at 7:00 PM at the Blacksburg Library. Then our next board of supervisors meeting, because of the VACO conference, we've had to shift our next meeting, so our next board of supervisors meeting will be on Wednesday, November 14th. So just wanted to remind folks of that. Also, it does appear that we've got the legislative dinner pinned down to November 29th. Is that a Monday? Or that's a?
It's a Thursday.
That's right. It's a Thursday.
26th is a Monday.
Yeah, so, yes, ma'am, the legislative dinner will be on Thursday, November?
The 29th.
November 29th. Yes, ma'am. That will be here. That'll actually be, we're actually going to use Building C, the room that we met with the joint meeting with the school board. That room worked well, but we've got three of the legislators confirmed for that night, for sure, so.
What time? What time?
6 o'clock. Is that what we discussed? 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Then two December meetings that you may want to get on your calendar. The annual breakfast with Santa meeting, which is all important to make sure you get your naughty and nice list in, will be on Saturday, December the 8th. That's always a fun event, and we usually have quite a few kids and adults that have fun with Santa on Saturday, the 8th. We'll get more information out on that. And then the county's holiday dinner will be on Friday night, December 14th. I think an email's been sent out to you guys on that, but if it hadn't, I wanted to make sure you.
I don't think so.
Okay, that's, I was concerned that that might be the case, that's why I wrote it down. So that's on Friday, the 14th, but we'll get notices out on all of those to remind you. Two other quick things. Got a call from Judge Turk this morning, he wanted to come by and visit with me, and that's always a little bit scary when the judge wants to come visit. But the primary purpose of his visit today was to thank the county for the new courthouse. He said that overall, things have gone very well, they've been very pleased with the operation of the new building, his staff has been very complimentary, the citizens that have been in the building so far have been very complimentary, and he said that he knows that we get beat up on a lot of things, but he wanted to come over and thank us for what we had done. And I've told him I would certainly pass that on to the board.
Did he mention, I was in the law library, and I noticed that there's books on the floor.
Well, I already got it taken care of.
Thank God, I didn't know if the judge mentioned that.
Yep, but shelves are on the way. And last thing, I did send out an email earlier today that was forwarded from Dan Baranato regarding tours of the new schools. They are doing tours tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at 5:00 PM for, it's not for the public, but it's for the elected officials, and that's at Auburn this week, and then at Blacksburg High School next, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at 5:00 PM. If you get an opportunity, if you can let me know, and several of you already have, but if you can let me know what days would work better for you, and the reason we want to do that, too, is if we wind up having more than two, it turns into a meeting, so I'm trying to make sure we balance everybody out, so we don't have public meetings, but if you'll get back to me on that, that'll be great. And, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
All right. Board member reports are next. Supervisor Perkins?
I want to ask Mr. Meadows, we're having one meeting in December on the 10th? Is that correct?
It is actually on the 17th.
The when?
Monday, the 17th. Our meetings in December normally would be the 10th and the 24th, so we split the difference and set it for the 17th.
That also helps with the planning, with the process of public hearing stuff going through, planning, so they don't lose a month.
No other report?
Okay. And Mr. Creed?
Just the one thing, and it has to do with the dollars appropriated for the roads. I thought I was getting the road completely fixed, and it sounds like I'm not, I'm just getting some edges cut off of the hard banks. And if there is any more than the $250,000, $250,000 dollars set aside for any road, then I'd like to have an equal amount of whatever that is. And that's, you know, that's just, I think Mr. Tuck touched upon that.
Yes, sir. Do you want to bring it up now?
250, 250, huh?
I guess I would make a motion at this point in time, one, to approve $250,000 to be spent on the Mountain Pleasant Road, an additional $85,000 to be set aside for Old Sourwood Road, and we didn't really discuss whether we were going to go with the option of widening and paving the $85,000 option in regards to Blue Springs Road, I believe that was mentioned, or whether we were going to go with the rural rustic, and so I would move to adopt, I guess, let's go with the 85. At this point in time, we can always go down, and then the remainder of that funds, if I, that's approximately $170,000, additional $80,000 to be allocated to work on Rusher Creek Road, so each district would have to be spending $250,000 on the roads. Of that, $449,000 would come from our reserves that we've discussed earlier tonight, with $51,000, I think, is already in those. So that, I would make that motion, I guess, at this point in time.
I will second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lewis?
Aye.
Set an eye.
We'll get that set up.
Anything else, Mr. Creed?
Now, let's bring in some more money for roads.
Supervisor Gabriel?
Don't worry, Dad. I just want to say, I was, sorry that I wasn't able to attend the last community meeting at Christiansburg Middle School. I hear it went very well. I'm looking forward to the next one at Blacksburg Library on the 29th. Just a brief note about the school board meeting, tenet school board meeting last week, and most of the discussion, all the capital projects are still on time, the facilities are being updated and all that kind of good stuff. They are very concerned about the coming budget, but right now, Ms. Blackburn seems budget, but right now, Ms. Blackburn seems to estimate that the school board will be down about $1.5 million from where they are right now going into next year. And that has to do mostly with VRS contributions and, and a couple of other, a couple of other issues. There were, there were a whole lot of parents there, and they're very concerned about schools being closed in the coming year, because those were on the list of potential cuts from last year, and they're worried that those are being carried forward, so if you start to hear from concerned parents, that's, that's why. So that, that doesn't look particularly great. They scheduled their budget calendar, which of course will match up with ours, and they're actually going to start very early with public input about budget priorities, actually starting next month, so they're going to start their discussions very soon. And I think that's, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Supervisor Tuck?
Start off with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission met and voted five to three not to do anything about chickens, and any ordinances in regards to chickens. A few things. One, the Planning Commission, it was presented that there's actually a tract that's got 600 acres in it, and they are not allowed to have single chicken. To me, government is supposed to be as least restrictive as possible.
Taking down zones.
Yes, but that means they have to go to the government to be able to do something, and have to ask the government for something. And, and to me, we're, we're supposed to be about, you know, government, government's least, government's best. And so I would like to see us ask the Planning Commission to revisit chicken issue, look at a reasonable ordinances. There were several proposals that were there. The vote was five to three. If, and Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, the five that were voting against it felt like that there weren't enough complaints. And it was brought up about the real estate closing that didn't happen, because they, they were told they couldn't have chickens. Well, we want our citizens to be law-abiding, and some people said, well, don't worry about it, nobody's saying anything, just go ahead and have them. But we want the people to listen to our ordinances, we want them to avail, and we want them to be reasonable. And so I would ask the board if it would consider giving directions to the Planning Commission. If it wants to end it and not do anything with chickens, that's this board's decision. If the board wants to revisit that issue, I know that it's over in Radford, I haven't heard it's been a single problem. I, I, we did not hear from anyone in the poultry industry or any, anybody that, that had, is a chicken expert as far as the smells and things like that. As people who, as someone who has chickens, I know roosters are annoying. I think we could adopt some reasonable regulations in regards to that, especially because we're talking about residential areas. But this has really truly become a hobby, and also grow local, eat local, the eating local movement, so.
Can I ask a question about that? Were, Steve, were you able to get in touch with that gentleman from Virginia Tech? Yeah. And he was able to offer input on that?
I did contact him, and he was ready and willing to help, we just didn't get to that point. The commission just said, we don't think it's a big enough issue, or at least five of them said, didn't think it was a big enough issue to...
Okay, thank you.
You know, we, we remind Mr. Tuck of one thing, and that is that, once they've heard it and made their decision, then it can come to this board, and we can vote on it, up or down, whichever way you want to go, whether they passed it or not.
And I, I understand that, and I didn't know if we wanted to send it, but I think they were looking, and Steve, they said, send this to the board, if they want us to revisit it, we will. That was kind of the gist I received from the Planning Commission. And there were several different proposals, whether we were talking about acreage, we were talking about the amounts, those type things, and adopting different ordinances. And I wouldn't want to take it up tonight, because, one, the hour is late, and, but there, it was a nice presentation that was done by the staff about all the different types of ordinances that are out there. And so I guess I'm looking for guidance. But at the same time, if you wanted to take this board up now, or take it up before this board, I, I guess we would, I would want to see us put it on the agenda and see the same presentation that the, the planning, the staff did in front of the Planning Commission.
I'd like to add hogs to it, too.
I don't think we want hogs in residential areas. I've never raised hogs, and maybe they're wonderful pets and the like, but...
Make wonderful sizes, too.
I'm right on that, somebody else's.
And that was absolutely the regulations that...
And that should, should be the same for chickens and hogs.
Well, I understand, and there is a difference between residential areas and those that are zoned agricultural. You can have, I want to say per acre, 200 chickens, because there are 100 chickens per acre in your, if you're in agricultural.
That'd be a mess.
Yes, it would be, and to stay under the, basically the industrial-type farms that you see.
Intensive.
Intensive, thank you.
I don't think we can have that many hogs, and I...
I don't, each unit is dedicated, so each animal has a different unit that they're allowed per acre.
Would you like to ask the board to return it to the Planning Commission?
I would, I think so.
And can we do that by vote, or can we do that by consensus?
Well, I'm not sure what we're returning to them, I mean...
I think they're looking for guidance from us. Is this really an issue we want them to address?
Right, yeah, there's two ways to do it. You can say, Planning Commission, which you've already done, look at this and tell us whether you think there should be, right now, there's no zone, you can't do anything residential with chickens. And so we asked them, look at that, do you think there should be changes, meaning should there be, you know, that people should have the right to do something with chickens residential? They came back and said, no. Now, the other option is the board can say, like you say, Chris, here are proposals, and then the board can say, we like this, then send it to the commission and start the process. So they can initiate zoning changes, and this board can initiate zoning changes, but then everything goes through the Planning Commission and back to this board. They can be initiated either way.
Can I, can I make a suggestion then? Perhaps we should put something on the, on a work session for future meeting, which we see the same presentation as, as Supervisor Tuck was suggesting, and then we can decide as a board what we would like to see specifically. Yeah.
Or even give options. Do you like this one or that one?
Yeah.
And then decide, but you eventually have to advertise one or the other.
Yeah.
Well, I, was that a motion? I guess...
Is that necessary?
I don't agree with your motion, I need you to go to the...
Consensus, yes.
Second, I've got, I've got three items on that. The, there's just a little sporting event that's coming up on November the 2nd. It's called the Battle of the Birds, and I'm willing to put my pride where my mouth is, and I believe that the Christiansburg Blue Demons are going to beat Blacksburg High School in, in football. And I would be willing to don on a Blacksburg cap, or if y'all had a ghillie shirt you wanted me to wear or the like during our next board meeting on November, I think the 14th, and, but should, you know, Christiansburg win, as I believe that they will, then anyone else who would like to partake in that bet, I'll be more than happy to find some suitable Christiansburg gear for them to wear for that same meeting.
I have plenty, I have plenty of Christiansburg here. So I would be more than happy to bring it.
Until someone plays...
I have shirts and everything.
Healthier, because we, we, I spoke about, that's quite a good...
I'm just saying this, I'm throwing it out there, if anybody wants to take me up on it. The last thing in regards to, Gary and I had the opportunity to attend the Sheeler Motor Mile Talent Show. It was incredible. I went there and I was thinking, okay, I know that there's some Christiansburg kids that are talented. None of my kids were participating, but I went there and I was just socks knocked off. It was as a professional, Sheelers paid probably, I'm guessing, $5,000 to $10,000. They had professional lighting, professional sound system. They brought in Danny and Zach and Ms. Monica from K92 to MC it. They gave away, Christiansburg did get first place, $20,000 to Christiansburg High School, $10,000 to second place, which was Pulaski, a young lady performed Pulaski. There was, then, a, I forgot, Radford won third place with a $5,000 check, and then Blacksburg Chellis, young lady Chellis, received, or Blacksburg High School got $2,500. Total prizes that they gave out, not just to schools, but to students, was $50,000. That's a tremendous gift to our community. And I, whether, some people may be a little bit, students say it was a marketing, but I tell you what, that's the kind of marketing I like to see, that when they're giving our schools that kind of money. And I was wondering if the board would entertain just a simple letter of thanks for what they've done, and the $50,000 that they committed to education, but if we could just send a letter of thanks and recognize that, and the $20,000 check that they're getting ready to cut to Christiansburg High School, and another $2,500 to Blacksburg.
Did they say how the money had to be used?
Nope, they just, well, they said for, for the schools.
Had to be used for something for all of the school, they couldn't just go for somebody's...
Just one activity, it was supposed to be...
In other words, it couldn't go just for music, or...
That was the intent, that they wanted it to be spent, but for that school, was, but it didn't seem like there was a lot of strings attached. They wanted...
No, they just said it could go for field trips, it could go for just about anything, but to be spent to, to benefit the school.
And, and they recognized some of the budget cuts that we've all been facing, and that's one of the reasons that they came up with program. And there's a lot of others. I didn't know this, I recently, you know, I wish I had, but there was program. If you buy a car over there, and you simply say, I want to give $100 to the, the school, any school, in the New River Valley or anywhere, they'll give $100. There's also some additional incentives that are there, and, but it was a tremendous program. I hope they do it again next year. I felt like I basically was on Broadway, or it was that type of high-level professional performance system.
The schools have to be signed up in order for them to get that, too.
Oh, do the, I...
I am, you know, I, I think it's amazing, the talent we do have in this whole New River Valley. My husband and I worked with this summer musical enterprise for about 15 years, and that's an all-volunteer thing, it's all our students as well as adults. Most amazing things. So I'm sorry I did not go to that program, I was not able to, but I have long enjoyed the talent, not only of students, but of our people in our community, the whole New River Valley.
Well, these were just students, and then they won in their individual schools, and then each individual school, there were eight participating, participating schools, and each one of those sent two, and, and it was, I tell you what, I had a great time, and it was, it was a great experience, a great fundraiser for our schools.
You might want to say, too, that their goal for this year to give away is $600,000 to the schools.
They want to get, they're, they're saying, they're committed, they will give as much as $600,000. They gave, they're giving, they normally give about $10,000 in scholarships, but through this incentive program, they said, look, you know, we sell 10, $12,000, 12,000 cars per year, but there were employee incentives, if you're in the schools system and you know about this, and I, I can't remember...
If a school teacher buys a car, they will give $500 in cash back to the school teacher, and $500 to the school.
And so you start doing the math, and they've set aside as much as $600,000 to give to our schools. Well, that's almost a penny.
And they'll get more than that. You know, they'd love to have the business, that's...
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe we ought to talk to them about giving to the foundation, too, for schools. You know, where we're setting up an endowment.
I guess, now I saw Mary's...
Oh, I was going to say, I think that's a really good idea, because I think, you know, to send a letter like you're talking about, because they've really made an effort to, to reach out, and, you know, maybe, you know, some other organizations or businesses would like to do that, too. You know, now that this has come about and been advertised. They did have some good advertising for it, ahead of time, in newspapers even, they had who was going to be participating in that kind of thing, so, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
There was a freshman from Pulaski, so she's going to be back for a year or two. Come in second place this year on some people's cards, and on a lot, they were first, she was first, I guarantee you. But she has just got a wonderful, wonderful voice.
I, I couldn't believe the opera singer from Blacksburg did not place. She was incredible.
And she was very good.
And I'm not a big fan of opera, but she was just, you sat back and you were in awe. So is there consensus to send the letter?
Yep.
That's it.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Okay, issue may take a couple minutes here. Last week, we heard a presentation on the proposed Harvey Lee Park. There was a gentleman that spoke and presented 43 signatures in opposition of that park. I spoke to former David, Dave Nutter, strongly opposed to the park, who lives out there in that area near the park. About a year or so ago, if I remember correctly, there were two people who somewhat supported the concept of a park, but since then, I haven't heard from any of the supporters supporting that concept there. Now, I think one or two of our members, I don't know how many, may want to put this on for a work session, but I think we need consensus to put it on. It's in my district, District E, and I sort of know the people out there, and at least these ones, many of these ones on the signatures, and some of them that, who did not sign it. And they are totally opposed to it, so it's the flavor of this board, and Mr. Chair, I think you ought to get consensus, whether we take it on as a work session item, or we drop it at this particular point.
And I, as far as looking at that, and we've all seen the email that went around in regards to saying that they're looking at giving it to Virginia Tech, and I wonder if those same citizens who are so concerned about a park, how they feel if Virginia Tech, which doesn't have to comply with our zoning rules, decided to take that piece of property, and maybe it connects with another piece of property, and they decide to build student housing out there. When we get, when that 44 acres is no longer in our hands, and it's in Virginia Tech's hands, that's, one, it's off the tax rolls. So one way or the other...
If it goes to the foundation, it's off the tax rolls, too.
Right, right, one way or the other, it's off the tax rolls. And I am sensitive, you know the citizens out there. But I, I guess, my dad always taught me, they ain't making no more real estate. And there's 44 acres there that, and I've, I've also had several people in Christiansburg Town Council talking to me, how they wish, they, they would love to have the property that we've gotten downtown Christiansburg to be able to use for a park, because Christiansburg, when it was growing, didn't think about a park. And so I guess I'm looking now, what about 20 or 30 years down the road? Do we need this piece of property to be a park?
Originally, originally, when that, this property came out to our attention, and been on Recreation Commission, the commissioner says, this would be great for land bounty, for future use down, we didn't say future use, the next five or 10 years, when down the road to when economic conditions got better, and et cetera, et cetera. But along with that proposal to, to give it to us, there were so many strings attached. And when all these strings came, he said, no, 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 we, we can't do anything with it right now, we don't have the resources, da-da-da-da. And, and so we didn't want it. And at this particular time, and even people complained about the, the road. One of the things they, they said to me, says, this, the road that goes in about the school, they talking about a park, and my God, we've been trying to get this road fixed for 20 years. The empty way down beside the school to get down in there, and says, a park? Looks like you ought to be talking about a road or something, you know, widening the road and so forth, so that it won't handle the traffic. Even former Dale, 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 who says that, we feel secure going to work, et cetera, et cetera, without drawing all the people down in there, and, and so forth, and says, no, 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 we don't want a park. He, he made it pretty clear to me Tuesday night. And so it's the pleasure of this board, and whatever it is, whether it goes on a work session, or whatever, or how far I'd ever go, I'm going to always be opposed to it, simply because that's the wishes of the people, the majority of the people I represent out there.
Well, I would, I would say that, because I feel like the person who knows their district best is the person that represents them, and they're the ones that's going to take the heat, whether it's light heat, or whether it's a whole lot of heat, that person's going to take the heat. And I'm going to, may place my vote exactly however Mr. Brown places it.
But regardless of how the board handles this, I assure you, Mr. Creed, I can take the heat. I mean, probably if I voted yes for it and support of it, they'd really get pretty hot.
That's what I'm talking about.
But if, and, and it's trying to be the right thing.
Good. The question I guess is, do we have a...
Red?
Supervisor. Yeah. I, I understand, I mean, you know, this is the second time, maybe even the third time, that this, this parcel's been presented to the board, and it's, it's my understanding from Mr. Tangriss' presentation, that this time, most, most of the strings that I think rightly gave everyone pause have, but most of the strings now have been cut, is that the thing that struck me, one of the things that really struck me about his presentation, is that, is there was no timeline upon when we would have to develop this into a park. And so if it took a while, and we needed to approve the road down there, then, then that's what we would need to do. But as long as at some point, this, this property were turned into a park, then, then that's, that's what we would need to do. The second thing is that, is I just totally lost my train of thought, so.
Virginia Tech, the foundation?
The foundation, well, yeah, I mean, as Supervisor Tuck said, I mean, this is going off the tax rolls one way or another. You know, they're either going to develop it themselves privately, though there seems to be some movement now to, to simply donate it to the, to the foundation. And I remembered my other point. My other point was simply that this board has talked, since I've been on the board repeatedly, and during, especially during the extended work session we had in Building C, is that we want to spend some time in the future improving our parks and recreation offerings. And here is an opportunity at which we are granted land, at which we could actually develop. And I understand that we don't have the resources right now to adequately, perhaps adequately staff that, but to my mind, that's the wrong question, or that's the wrong thing to be thinking right now, is we need to ask, well, what would it take to adequately staff this thing? And is this board actually committed to parks, or are we just paying lip, paying lip service to it? Do we really want to approve, you know, the quality of life in that particular area for our citizens? And here is, here is a golden opportunity, a gift of 44 acres in an area that has traditionally been relatively underserved within the county, that would benefit everyone throughout the county. So, so I would, I would strongly support, you know, at least talking a little bit about this more, I understand Mr. Brown's concerns, I respect them. And if we do decide not to go ahead, I would ask simply that we have an up or down vote about it. That's all I have to say on that.
The only thing I would add, as far as, as I understand, stood their presentation, the burden's on them to apply for the grants, the burden's on them to do this things. Is it, do we have some liability issues? We did. Does the citizens have some legitimate concerns about the road? They did. But again, it, it's one of those things where, I guess, it's a large track of land. It's, 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 to me, prime to be able to do some things with. And so that's where I'm coming from. I'd like to talk about it, but I, I, I don't want to underestimate. I understand where Bill's at. He's out at Snuggies every day, he's out there talking coffee and, and talking with people, and it's not just the people that are signing the petition that he's dealing with. There may be 47 on that... are signing the petition that he's dealing with. There may be forty-seven on that petition, but he may be dealing with a hundred and forty-seven people. But at the same time, I would like to talk.
And I think that should be true for any parcel of land. I mean, we're gonna have, you know, old high school property, old Blacksburg High School, which sits entirely within my district. So I mean, I don't want, I don't want anybody to think that you should always defer, you know, to my opinion as well. I want, you know, I want an open discussion about it. So.
Well, I've got two people that wanna, it sounds like go to a work session for it. And I've got two that don't, and I got two more I need to hear from. So.
Get consensus.
I guess what I'll say is, how many want to go for a work session to continue discussion?
I guess.
And how many want to drop?
Put this up here so you can see.
I don't mind going for work session a little bit, but we've talked about.
We've talked about this for a year and a half.
I have a question about if they, if it were to roll over to the foundation and then become part of the Virginia Tech Foundation, then the county would have no control of the land. Is that true? I mean, like, they could do whatever they wanted to the land? Because is that the shame of Virginia Tech? Is the foundation the same as Virginia Tech as far as being able not to have to do zoning and all that kind of stuff? How does that work?
Yeah, generally, the foundation is seen as the alter ego of Virginia Tech.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, let me just ask this question. The residents out there that are opposed to the, you know, to the park, Bill, do they know that if Virginia Tech Foundation gets it, that they can do anything to the land, or do they not know that?
Well, this is my perception. And among my perception, they may think a little bit different. It's, it's several of them that strongly oppose, we don't want a park. No. And I don't think they care whatever happens to the property, but they don't want, you know, it's the narrow roads, it's the security they feel with their children riding from one house to the other.
Their neighborhood.
And their neighborhood streets and things. They know, they believe that it's gonna draw camping. I mean, even the presentation, the guy said, this is a wonderful place for camping. And I'm still like, camping? I said, after a moment of silence, you talk about camp, well, I didn't say nothing about camping, but I didn't want to press the issue. And even the people looked at it on TV, says, we've seen him when you questioned about canceling, I mean, camping. But there's a number of things, the narrow roads that go in and out, and because when you talk about the park, and one of the things come up, say, a park? We've been for seventeen, eighteen years trying to get this little road, you know, where we can get in and out. And I don't, I would say that the majority of people I talked to, they couldn't care less what went down there, but a park, something that would draw traffic. I don't anticipate any apartments being built there, except because Scruggs Creek and all of that through there that runs through, it's in a flood plain.
What about that road? What about the road from Southgate going through?
A road that I understand, it might be built in our lifetime, it might be built, it might not be built in our lifetime. It's like the, like the Price's Walk bypass or something that goes to Virginia Tech. We talked to Dan. Dan said, he said, well, I doubt it'd be built in our lifetime.
I don't know. When you consider Tech is growing by leaps and bounds, and there's so much traffic down Price's Walk Road there, you know, going between Blacksburg and Radford, you just never know. I mean, you have to look into the future too. As it stands, I would support you, Bill, but I wouldn't have a great deal of trouble really getting down to the issue if you had it on a work session.
Okay. I'm only one of seven people, and whatever the majority wants to do, I'm satisfied with that.
I think we either need to vote it up or down.
Yeah, that's right.
Either, go forward as far as we can go or get rid of it. And whichever one it is, I don't care. You want to make a motion tonight to? I thought we just did. Well, no, he did. Well, he did make a motion. Well, he's asked for consensus. We have three, we had heard from you, Mary.
Well, I guess my question is, thinking about Bill and the heat. Okay, so, okay, but if the foundation takes it over and they do something else, then are you gonna get heat for that too? I mean, like, I don't know what they'd even do with the land, to be honest.
Well, adjacent to it, they, what's it got, about eight hundred acres that they haven't done anything with. I think some professors probably talking about a research and taking this class down there, doing a bunch of things. And I think they propose having public trails through it, so to speak. And so I don't know what's gonna happen with.
So then it could still end up being a park.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's gonna be a park for one or another. I mean, the people, their concerns are gonna be, you know, they're gonna have to deal with the traffic and the narrow road and stuff like that.
There's a few people, there's a few people, not a big number, there's a few people, some of the local people there, and I don't know whether they still doing, they used to ride two or three four-wheelers through there. And some of the local people walk through there. But I don't know what the outside people come in and use it sincerely. Maybe because they don't know that it's there, you know, like college students, so to speak.
But I guess, well, maybe, I know, the point I was making about that is, we would have at least some control, and the citizens could come back to us and say, listen, this needs to be addressed. But once it's Virginia Tech, the citizens can go talk to Tech all they want to.
Once it become ours, if it become ours, the first thing, I think, when it's signed up to Montgomery County, there's a property on adjacent to it that wants its channeling fence down through here. Every time something happened, the telephone's gonna ring. Being a member of the Parks and liaison to Parks and Recreation Commission, and it seems like, and it always seemed this way, when funding comes, Parks and Recreation is always at the bottom.
Right.
You know, it's just the, I guess, people say it's a necessary evil. And so we'll give it a little bit of money. But when it come to staff, Mitch is gonna have staff to do what needs to be done in our current parks.
That's true.
And.
That's true.
But like I say, I'm one of seven, and whatever.
Make a motion to vote it up or down. Let's get rid of, either do or don't.
Yeah, we need to, we need, I don't know, do you need a motion or you need consensus to put it on as a work session? Because if, I mean, the same thing. I can come and say, I want a work session on hogs, for example, since Chris wants a check. And hogs. And then you guys, one, two, three, six, y'all say, no, we don't need it. Well, when we hold in a general review, it won't go on there.
Right.
You know. But if it's consensus to put it on, and I think that probably what's involved is gonna take staff two or three months to even get it together, to present the potential personnel requirements for it, whatever other things that they do to even start making it even look like a park. So it would take some time. I think that even if we voted it up for a work session today, it wouldn't go on the next board meeting that we have. I think we'd have to get staff adequate time to pull all the information together. And it might be, what, two, three months, I guess.
It would take, it would take some time.
You know, my thing is this, is we've been talking about this for six months, a year? Longer than that, yeah. Long, long, long time. You know, since it's come up, I'd vote for it to go, to vote it up or down.
Well, now, you heard this out of his own mouth. When we toured that place, he told us two citizens, two citizens, this place is gonna be a park, whether it's public or whether it's private. And I said, private, sound pretty good.
That's right.
Yeah, Jim and I heard that something out his mouth. Well, let it go private.
And that's my opinion too. I, I support Bill a hundred percent on this. We've talked about it. It's his neighborhood, it's his.
Can I, can I make some sort of motion then, that we either, that, I don't know how perhaps this would best be phrased, but as Mr. Creed said, there seems to be not consensus, but a clear majority-minority here about, but I think we at least owe it to the Friends of the River of Virginia to tell them clearly.
We want to go on the record.
Yes, that we are, we are not interested in.
So you want to make a motion that we?
I will make a motion that we.
Continue the discussion on the park or we drop it?
Yes. Should, can I do that? Or what?
That's two motions.
I guess.
No, no, but there's two motions again, isn't it?
We don't need.
Can I make a motion to accept the property? And that could be simply?
Vote it up or down.
Vote it up or down?
You could do that.
Yeah.
Would that be?
Yeah, either way, it means the same thing.
Because it, being a part of this board for about a year, we kind of said, okay, when we vote on something, we're gonna move along. And, and so I, I understand, I mean, we're gonna, I'm pretty clear I won't lose on my vote. But at least it does tell Friends of the River so they know what to do.
All right. And regardless of the outcome, therefore, perhaps staff could formally notify them of what, what the decision is. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the property.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Moving second. Any further discussion?
I will simply say one more thing, is that I think the discussion, the distinction that Mr. Brown and Mr. Plittus were trying to make between public and private, in this case, is a false distinction. Because in both cases, the foundation and its volunteers would develop, create the park out of their own money and their own time. So it wouldn't involve an initial investment of money. The difference, the only difference would be with a public park that we control, we would actually be able to influence what happened there. And in a private park, we would have very little to no such control.
I'm just a little worried about it. Open-ended, we will accept it, because we don't know what the conditions are, or what the offer is. So not knowing how the board will vote, how about, is there a way that you could temper that in some way where maybe say?
Conditional upon certain conditions being met.
Would we be able to a, an offer of acceptance, and if those conditions are met, we would take it, something like that?
And.
And you also need due diligence. You want to do both that as well.
Exactly. And that was one of the things that was raised, is it has, that it's been done. And I believe they, and there was.
I don't think they have.
They were saying that they had, at least in the meetings.
We're not aware.
They've never made us aware of it.
I know, I know that's been done. And I know.
It's just gone.
Well, the environmental came up early on, and we were told that it had been looked at, but we've, nobody's ever produced.
We walked a part of the property in some areas that we need to further investigate.
Can I amend the motion, or does somebody else need to?
I think you can.
I can amend the motion. Okay, so.
May I say just one thing, Kim? I really hate to turn down land that people offer to us. But having, in my own district, having supported a mark and have found out what, what a terrible thing it is to have this, to police it, to take care of it, to cut the grass, to keep people out, even homeless people living in a little cabin there. I, I know what the difficulty is in taking a piece of land and having the county not have the money nor the personnel to truly take care of an area. So as much as I really hate to not take something that's a gift like that, because I have to admit, I don't have enough foresight to really see where that is down the road. But I, I, I know from experience that it's probably not a good thing. And unless we had a lot more controls and a lot more personnel to try to, to deal with it. So that's my opinion.
We refused fifty acres in Reiner several years ago from the Larson Foundation because they had so many restrictions on it. And you don't know what you're gonna get into there. I know the property you're talking about.
I gotta go home.
All right, let's.
Well, I think I need to amend my motion. Is that right? That I need to amend the motion that we would be willing to entertain an offer of the land from the Friends of the River of Virginia, continued upon certain conditions being met? Is that okay?
And I guess I would amend my second.
And what is the roll call?
Roll call, please.
So yes would be to accept, yes would be to consider the offer, and no would be to.
Ms. Biggs?
Um, no.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Creed?
No.
Ms. Perkins?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Chair?
No.
I have five nos, two yes. So resolution is?
All right. Is that it, Mr. Brown?
That's it.
Ms. Biggs?
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is make a motion that we set aside the million dollars for the animal shelter reserve.
Settle.
Moving second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Plittus?
No.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I just wanted to point out that you all received this in your packet tonight. This is the annual report from the library. And they tried, what they tried to do is get everything on, you know, four pages, and they did an excellent job with that. And Floyd Childress came to accept the resolution that we passed for his mother's work with the library board. And I want to tell you that he gave the most moving speech I've ever heard as far as why libraries are important, and thanked us over and over again for our support over the years for libraries. And it was very uplifting. And I told him I'd make sure I told you all. He was very appreciative of the resolution. And that's it.
And Mr. Plittus, no report. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.